Good evening. Thank you all for coming this evening. We're just short one student. We're hoping that one student is going to arrive. I know the traffic in town is really perfect this evening. We would like to open our ceremony this evening with the Pledge of Allegiance, and that is led by Maddie Toul and Matthew Ryan. So if you would stand, please. And two right over here, right close to this.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the red flag for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Matthew. Thank you, Matthew. I think this by far is one of the most memorable evenings that we get to have as administrators across the district and also for Board of Education members. They don't often get to do all the fun stuff. They get to do the tough stuff. And so first of all, I'd like to thank them for all the work that they do continuously. Don't let anyone fool you that it's two nights a month that they meet or that they work because they're constantly working. It's not an easy job, but it's probably one of the most rewarding jobs in our elective offices that I have ever been privileged to work with. So again, I thank them very, very much. This evening, we have three categories of awards. The first one will be our Teacher of the Year, which of course is a very special, special award. One person receives this award and exemplifies all that is good in all of the teachers in Vernon. The second is the Connecticut Association of Public Schools Superintendent's Awards. We here in Vernon present an award to two 5th graders in each of our five elementary schools, two 8th graders at Vernon Center Middle School, and two 12th graders at Rockville High School. These awards are given for leadership, service, and academic prowess. So that's also a very, very special award. And then lastly, and not leastly, are our Profiles in Professionalism Award. We have many, many dedicated employees. Vernon Public Schools has over 850 employees. And so this is a very small group of these employees who are honored for their professionalism and dedication to the Vernon Public Schools. So we will start with our Vernon Teacher of the Year Award. It's not a surprise at this point that she knows who she is. In fact, we'll be going into Hartford in a couple of weeks to receive the award from the commissioner. For me, that's a very, very special night. I always get goosebumps when I sit in the audience with 169 outstanding educators, and I feel awed to be in their presence. And I am awed to be in Maureen Carney's presence. So Maureen, would you come up here, please? I've known Maureen Carney for only the last four years. Very early on, she came onto my radar screen as an educational force to be reckoned with. Whether she's working with 6th grade students at Vernon Center Middle School or with our kindergarten students at Maple Street School, and she's now just moved over to Skinner Road. Watch out, Skinner Road. She is focused and driven to ensure that all students are learning at high levels. Her teaching, facilitating, and coaching produce incredible achievement results because she truly believes, and she gets her students to believe, that they can do anything. Last year at Maple Street School, Maureen asked the principal if she, in her role as reading specialist, could concentrate on kindergarten. When given the go-ahead, she immersed herself into that grade level to the point where I believe that every one of those students believed that she was their second teacher in the classroom, and she cared for them, and was just as important as their assigned teacher. She kept telling them they were good readers and they were authors. She held celebration after celebration of their work and held each student to high standards, which, under her guidance, they met. I cannot thank Maureen enough for her hard work for the Vernon Public Schools and especially for our early readers and writers. Maureen's energy, enthusiasm, and dedication to the Vernon Public Schools make her the perfect 2015 Vernon Teacher of the Year. Our first superintendent's award will be for Center Road School. So Mrs. Ann Fisher. I didn't even introduce the board. I beg your pardon. I would like to introduce the board members who are here. Mrs. Ann Fisher is our board chair. She's also the liaison to Center Road School, and that's why she'll be helping us present the first awards. Our secretary, Mrs. Laura Bush, is next. Board member Tom Cena Russell is next. Board member David Kemp is next. Vice Chair Dean Hool. Board member Stephen Linton. And Board member Michelle Arnn. So we have quite a showing here tonight. Again, they believe that this is a marvelous event, and it's one of those happy things they get to do. So, thank you. Could we have, please, Mrs. Podlich and Mrs. Ross, as well as Olivia Crowley and her parents, and Matthew Ryan and his parents, come forward, please. Mrs. Buchanan will be taking lots of pictures here this evening. Olivia Crowley, there's Olivia, is the daughter of Kerry and Michael Crowley. Olivia is a responsible and conscientious student who excels in all academic areas. She's consistently respectful, reliable, and responsible. She's an actor participant in band and the Center Road School Road Runners Jogging Club. She also dances and plays lacrosse. This year, Olivia joined 37 other Center Road School students in the Center Road School Marathon Relay Team and ran in the Hartford Marathon on Saturday, October 11th. Matthew Ryan is the son of Matthew and Laura Ryan. Matt is enthusiastic about learning and always willing to try something new. He's highly motivated to enrich his thinking through the completion of math challenges. You knew I was a mathematics teacher, didn't you, Matt? When someone's in need of a helping hand, you can always count on Matt to be there. He's respectful to all students and staff. Matt has been a member of the Vernon Vipers for five years. Once football season's over, he takes his games to the basketball court and in the springtime, lacrosse. And this is Mrs. Podlich, our principal. And we also have a new role. It's called a resident principal. This is Mrs. Ross. She is actually a principal in training through the University of Connecticut. We're very fortunate to have two residents in training in the Vernon Public Schools with us this year. So congratulations to all. Thank you. Mr. Hool, would you join us, please? Thank you. Mr. Dean Hool is the liaison from the board to Lake Street School. And this is Mrs. Glensel. It's Tracy Glensel behind me, who is the principal at Lake Street School. Would Joshua Ortiz and Madeline Montano, please, join us at the podium with their parents? Joshua Ortiz. Oh, goodness gracious. Thank you very much, Mr. Berg. I am her miss. Would our first two students, Matt and Maddie? Can you come back for a second? Olivia, I apologize. Matt, up here. There you go. Matt, you take that. I'll tell you what to do with it later. There you go. Thank you. Thank you very much. More than assistant superintendent, does it all. Joshua Ortiz is the son of Roberto and Jessica Ortiz. He's a hard-working and caring student. He's eager to lend a helping hand to anyone in need, whether it's cleaning up the classroom without being asked or helping another student with work. He always leads by example, showing the four school-wide expectations of respect, responsibility, cooperation, and safety. Outside of school, Josh is active in his church, where he serves as an altar boy. Madeline Montano is the daughter of Lawrence and Julie Montano. Maddie is a kind, caring classmate who is always willing to lend a hand to another student. She is very involved in the school's pride club, chorus, and band. Academically, she's a very hard worker and avid reader. She's incredibly responsible and gives her best effort at all times. Maddie's hard work and self-discipline also extend beyond the classroom as she is a black belt in karate, yet remains humble about her impressive accomplishments. We will be calling all the students back up for a group photo after the ceremony is all done. So please, hang on. Mrs. Russell, would you please help us for maybe two more? This is Mrs. Thomasina Russell, our newest board member. And could Ms. Trentolo, please? And Ms. Freeze Miller. And Annabella Zanotti with her parents, and James Wheeler with his parents. Annabella Zanotti is truly a... Oh, is this her? Sorry about that. That is the daughter of Ryan and Lindsay Zanotti. Annabella is truly a role model in her school. Every day, she comes in ready to learn. Her work habits and desire to do well have contributed to her outstanding academic record at Maple Street School. This year, Annabella has earned a spot on the safety patrol. She is looked up to by many, including her peers. She always demonstrates the bare necessities in everything that she does. Annabella has decided to play the flute this year and is excelling at it. Outside of school, Annabella is an avid cheerleader. She has competed in many competitions nationwide. James Wheeler is the son of Bert and Shereen Wheeler. James has demonstrated leadership throughout his years at Maple Street School. In 4th grade, he participated in a statewide leadership conference for students in grades 4 through 8. He utilizes the skills learned at this conference to motivate his peers to do the right thing. James has earned a position on safety patrol. He's a dedicated student and has a strong academic record at Maple Street School. He's been known to help others display the bare necessity behaviors. This year, James enjoys playing trumpet in the Maple Street Band. Outside of school, James is an ardent sports fan. He's the water boy for the Rockville High School Football Team. Thank you. And also, I'd like to introduce Ms. Trentolo, who is the newest principal we have at our Maple Street School. And this is Mrs. Jen Freeze Miller, and she is the other resident principal that we are so fortunate to have. UConn lent us a few people. So congratulations, all. Mrs. Bush. Mrs. Laura Bush is our secretary of our Board of Education. Mrs. Green was called away this evening, but is either Mrs. Halverson or Mrs. Palatier here? And we're going to try to make it. Oh, they're there. They're there. Great. Would you come down, please? Thank you. And would Molly Rodman and her parents, and Allison Ray and her parents, please, come down? Molly Rodman is the daughter of Neil and Jamie Rodman. Molly is a top-notch student who always gives 100%. She's very involved in the Northeast School community, cheering at the spirit assemblies for three years and participating in chorus. Outside of school, Molly keeps busy by playing the piano, taking four different types of dance, and cheering for the Vernon Vipers. She also fills water bottles to help out her brother's hockey team. She is an amazing role model in class and is always willing to help her peers when they need assistance. Allison Ray is the daughter of Amy Ray. Ally is an outstanding young lady. She's extremely responsible, hardworking, and motivated. She's also involved in several school activities. She's a percussionist in the band and has been a Northeast School cheerleader since 3rd grade. Ally was chosen to represent her class in Student Council. Outside of school, Ally plays soccer for the Barcelona Vernon team. She is also involved in charity work to increase awareness for breast cancer and recently spent a night volunteering at a fundraising event. Ms. Arnn, would you assist us with Skinner Road? Thank you. And would Olivia Toulon and her family, and Maggie Dwyer and her family, please, come forward? Olivia Toulon is the daughter of David and Evangeline Toulon. Olivia works hard in all academic areas. She's also known to be considerate and a thoughtful friend to all, always willing to help anyone. She's involved in several school activities. She plays for the school band and sings in the Skinner Road School Chorus. She also likes cracking interesting math problems in the Math Olympiads group. You know how I feel about that. Olivia is a dedicated student who participates in helping kindergarten during lunchtime and on the bus. Olivia is an SRS twirler, Student Council member, and was part of the Skinner Road School Hartford Marathon Team. In Olivia's free time, she enjoys Girl Scouts, dance class, and she also is a helper for the younger dance students. Maggie Dwyer is the daughter of Greg and Christine Dwyer. Maggie is compassionate and thoughtful of others and at all times eager to lend a helping hand. She is involved in numerous school activities. She plays the clarinet in the school band, enjoys solving challenging math problems in the Math Olympiads, participates in the Hartford Marathon with the SRS Marathon Team, member of Student Council and a kindergarten lunch helper, and keeps students safe by being a safety patrol member. In Maggie's free time, she's energetic and predominantly enjoys softball, cheerleading, and running. She takes guitar lessons year-round. Thank you. Congratulations. Mr. Harrison? Mr. Linton? Would Sierra Dixon and her family, and Jordan Ransom and her family, please, come down? Sierra Dixon is the daughter of Venus Dixon. Sierra goes above and beyond in the classroom and helps anyone. She's a leader at heart. She volunteered to lead the 8th grade chorus through warm-ups, which she learned as she researched on the Internet. When the teacher had bus duty, she helped four students practice songs until the teacher was able to return to the rehearsal session. She's auditioning for the Eastern Regional Festival again this year. I'm sure she'll do well. Jordan Ransom is the daughter of Stephen and Lynn Ransom. Jordan has participated in Student Council since the 6th grade and is currently president. So far this year, she has helped organize the 6th grade social and Halloween dance. She is currently a member of the band and chorus and has been part of the sewing and cooking clubs. She is a top student who works well independently and is very creative in her writing. Jordan's 7th grade team did an activity with a little girl named Abby who suffers from a very serious disease. Classmates nominated Jordan to read to Abby during the activity, and she chose to have her birthday party at a walk which was held in honor of Abby, the ill student, on a Saturday. Thank you very much. Mr. Kemp, would you join us, please? Thank you. We have Mr. Rocket, principal. We have Mrs. Trindali and Mr. Brewer, two assistant principals, with Mr. Kemp. Would Nicholas Bartos and his family, please, come? And Erica Mallory and her fam... Mallory, excuse me. And her family, please, come. I apologize. Nicholas Bartos is the son of Laslow and Deborah Bartos. Nick filmed, directed, produced, and edited the RHS and VCMS welcome videos, as well as the RHS Band Aid, Mock Car Crash, Austin, Abby, and Hunger Action videos. While those that have seen Nick's work agree that it is outstanding, his abilities were further validated by an honorable mention at the White House Film Festival and is the winner of the Best Editing Award at the Quiet Corner Film Festival this year. Nick is active within the school government and in his community. He has been co-class president since 2011, as well as co-Student Council Vice President since last year. He is a peer advocate, link crew leader, and a member of SNAP, that's Students Seeking New Achievements Positively. Outside of school, he volunteers his time as a lieutenant with the Volunteer Fire Department, as an assistant Sunday School teacher and Vacation Bible School Recreation Leader. He has also volunteered at the Cornerstone Soup Kitchen and Food Share. Nick is hoping to attend UConn next year and major in digital...
Digital media.
Media design, which I'm sure he'll do much better than I ever would. Erica Mallory is the daughter of Kevin and Jody Shinard. Erica is the co-class president for the class of 2015. Erica's played an integral role as a member of the core leadership committee of peer advocates. In this position, she's assisted with the planning and running of the volleyball lock-in and the mock car crash programs. In addition, she has volunteered her time tutoring students at the various elementary schools in Vernon. Erica works as a patient support volunteer at St. Mary's Home in West Hartford and volunteer for the Department of Nursing at the University of St. Joseph. She's also volunteered her time at the Ready-Set Baby Fair in Vernon and continues her work as an elderly companion and with Cornerstone Soup Kitchen and KidSafe. Now, excuse me. Erica is hoping to attend Fairfield University next year and major in nursing. Thank you. Little did you know that we start in PK and do not end at 12. We are actually a PK to 99 school. And so we also have a member of our Vernon Regional Adult Basic Education, VARAVE, our Adult Education Program, who we honor as a student. So would Rose Wannaducci, please, come up with her family? Thank you. And this is Dr. Carl Mandell. I don't know if you have been introduced to him. He is the director of our Vernon Regional Adult Education Basic Education Program. It covers 14 towns, from Griswolds to Weathersfield. So we're quite a large region, and it's all based right here in Vernon, Rockville. Rose brought with her her mom, Doris, today, and her daughters Heather and Stacy. Rose has diligently worked through 19 VARAVE classes so far with an A average while working full-time. Rose has a positive outlook on life, and her enthusiasm for learning is contagious. Rose not only cares about her own academic success, but over the years has befriended and supported other students so that they can be the best they can be. Rose pushes herself academically, always striving for a better grade and to improve the quality of her work. This last series of awards are our Profiles in Professionalism Awards. And these awards are given to staff members, again, for their professionalism out of 850 employees, who we have some part-time, most full-time, in a myriad of different services to the Vernon Public Schools. And so I'm going to ask all of them to come up at once so that we can congratulate them. So we have Alba Orsario, Deborah Hill, Kimberly Feishman, Sharon Jones, Diane Mador, and I think her husband Scott Mador and son Aiden are here. They would come forward. Peter Lynch, Amanda Johansson, Tammy Salmanin, and Joanne Palika. As you can see, we're missing a few people. We did honor them in front of staff the day before school started as well. So we have Alba Orsario here. And Alba has led the World Language Department in exemplary fashion. She leads by modeling excellent classroom practice and supports her colleagues as they work together to reach the team's goals. Congratulations and thank you, Alba. And next, we have Kimberly Feishman. And Kim goes out of her way to help her students and their families. She teaches English as a second language, by the way. And Alba teaches world languages, so there seems to be a pattern. Kim goes out of her way to help her students and their families. She goes way beyond the classroom and serves as a family advocate on her behalf. She's an asset to the ESL program and to the Vernon Public Schools. Congratulations and thank you, Kim. Diane Mador could not be with us. She's not feeling well this evening, and we're glad she's keeping her germs at home. But her husband Scott Mador is here, and their son Aiden is here. Diane is a caring, dedicated, and hard-working individual who is able to connect with a diverse population of students. She consistently goes over and above to support her students and the staff at Rockville High School. Congratulations. Please express that to her. And this is Joanne Palika. And Joanne embodies what an educator is and should be. Her endless patience, drive to reach every student, and motivation to grow as an educator positively impacts our students every single day. So some of you received a flower or two out there, in addition to your certificate. You know, you didn't get to this place all by yourselves. You weren't born with those leadership skills. You weren't born with the ability to do service. There are other people in the world who moved you to doing that, who enabled you to do that, who provided opportunities for you to grow those attributes. And they're very good attributes. So two things. One is you've demonstrated, especially the students here, leadership, service to community and school, and academic prowess. A big responsibility comes with that. We expect great things of you going forward, middle school, high school, college, and beyond. We truly do expect great things. You are the best at Vernon Public Schools. You represent us. You're rounded. You're a well-rounded person. So you have those flowers, and I want you to think of a person who might have helped you along the way, who might have provided you with the opportunity to grow to be a leader, to study harder, to give service to your community. It could be your mother, your father, your grandparents, your aunts, your uncles, your teachers, your principal. I have no idea who it would be, but someone you want to say, "Thanks for helping me along. Thanks for helping me get this way, get this far." So I would invite you all, as we close here, to give your flower to that person. Think about who it will be. Give your flower to that person. And then I need to see the students right over here. And then I need to see the students right over here very quickly, and please, everyone, join us for refreshments in the lobby. Thank you all for coming.